Good evening, welcome to the City of Brisbane Planning Commission Meeting of Thursday, March 10th, 2022. This virtual meeting is compliant with the Ralph and Brown Act amended by California Assembly Bill 361, effective September 16th, 2021, providing for a public health emergency exception to the standard teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Purpose of this is to provide a safe environment for staff planning commissioners and the public while allowing for public participation. Public may address the commission using exclusively remote public comment options, which will be provided on the screen as well. I'm going to jump straight to roll call, call me to order and roll call Commissioner Fooka.
Present.
Commissioner Gooding is absent. Commissioner Lau. Commissioner Lau.
Present. Sorry.
Commissioner Patel is absent. Commissioner Siason.
Yeah.
So we have a quorum of three commissioners, but note that both the Chair and Vice Chair are absent this evening. So I'd request that the remaining commissioners make a motion to appoint a temporary chairman for this evening's meeting, and I'll turn it over to that person. So entertain a motion to appoint a temporary chairperson.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Sassen for chair for the evening.
Second. Second.
I'd like to see a vote. Commissioner Fooka?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Siason?
Aye.
With that, I'll turn the meeting over to the acting chair. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, through the chair, I think there's an audio issue on YouTube.
Okay.
Apologies. Let me verify with our technical staff that our audio is live.
Okay.
Oh, it looks like it might be fixed now. Okay, let me. In that case, I believe apologies, you might have to do that motion and second again, just so.
We can, well, just into the record, we'll just read the relay that the commissioners by vote of three ayes to zero noes appointed Commissioner Siason to act as chairperson for this evening's meeting. With that, I would turn it over to to the acting chair pending resolution of the technical issues.
Okay. Great, and we are good.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, the Thursday, March 10, 2022, virtual regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission will now come to order. All written comments submitted before 2:00 PM today have already been provided to the commission and available for public inspection at City Hall and online at brisbaneca.org. Any writings received thereafter will be provided to the commission and available online at the start of the meeting. For those who did not provide written comments, a call-in telephone number was provided on the agenda, which can be viewed online. The phone number will also be provided during the meeting. Participants in Zoom, in the Zoom webinar may make audio-only comments through Zoom. Okay, adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
And I'll second.
And should we do a voice vote?
Commissioner Fooka?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Siason?
Aye, motion passes. Next is the consent calendar. If there is any member of the public who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar, please contact us within the next minute. Staff will post the number on the screen. And while we're waiting, if there are any commissioners who would like to remove an item from the consent counter, please say so. There is none.
Just through the chair, was it 30 seconds for consent?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I thought it said a minute. Alright, so we have about 20 seconds left. 10 seconds. Okay. 30 seconds have passed.
Hey, may I have a motion to adopt the consent counter?
I'll make a motion to adopt the counter.
In a second.
Second, I'll second.
Call.
Commissioner Fooka?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Siason?
Motion passes. Next is oral communications. If there is any member of the public who would like to address the commission about an item not on tonight's agenda, please call or text within the next minute. And staff, while we're waiting, we don't have any written communications, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
10 seconds. Okay, 10 seconds, or sorry, a minute has passed. I don't have any hands in Zoom and no text or calls.
Okay, great. Okay, and we have no written communication, so we'll move on to the next item. There are no older new businesses, so we'll turn to our workshop tonight concerning the 2023 to 2031 Housing Element Update. Staff, can we have their presentation?
Yes, let me put it up on the screen here. Okay, great. I'm sorry, Ken, are you gonna do the agenda, or should I? Nope, you're muted. I can, I can do it. Okay, so tonight our workshop is an introduction to the Goals, Policies and Programs section of the Housing Element. So we'll review the purpose of those, some suggestive changes to the goals and policies from staff, which were in your staff report, and then talk about next steps. So just as a general overview, the Goals, Policies and Programs section of the Housing Element, this is our action plan. So this is where we are actually committing to do things in order to maintain, preserve, rehabilitate existing housing, construct new housing to be in our arena, and ensure that there is access to housing from all segments of the population at all income levels and backgrounds, and that there is, we prevent discrimination in our housing policies as well. The hierarchy of goals, policies and programs, it's the same as any other element in the chapter. The goals are kind of that ideal state, that aspirational vision and outcome we want to achieve. Policies are drilling down into some more specific statements in terms of guiding decision-making, committing to courses of action, and then getting down even further to the specific programs. These are actually projects or services to implement the policies and help us meet those overarching goals. So tonight, tonight we're going to review the goals and policies. The attachment to your agenda or to your memo has a matrix of the current goals and policies, as well as showing suggested revisions from staff. So whether to retain it as is, to make some modifications, or to delete entirely if there's a need to, that's all explained in the attachment. And in terms of action programs, all the action programs really do kind of stem from the goals and policies. So tonight we wanted to check in with you and have discussion on those higher-level policy topics. And then the actual action programs will be developed to implement those, and those will be basically reviewed in the draft Housing Element. Once that's released for a public review, which will have at least a 30-day review period. So we're not going to discuss them tonight, but they will have been attached as information to previous workshop reports if you want to look at what was proposed for 2014, 20, excuse me, 2015 to 2022. And I'll toss it over to Ken.
Great, thank you. Since this is an update of the Housing Element, and we're not starting from scratch, as Julia mentioned, we have the existing goals, policies and programs. Well, the goals and policies and a decision matrix in your agenda report programs will follow. And that's along with any edits that staff is suggesting. And they're outlined in these next few slides here. Our aim is not to do a line-by-line review of each of the goals and policies, but presumably the commission has reviewed these in your reading of the Agenda Report. And if there are certain ones that the commission would like to pull out for discussion, we can do that. But I will highlight a few of the changes. On the goals, we've added language to specifically call out affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH. But the intent of that first goal remains the same. Essentially, the language has been brought up to to current day to address state housing law. Also, the second one is providing housing opportunities for all classes of people. And so that's that's on the goal. Farther down the list, we suggested that goal G can be removed since it's essentially a duplicate of E, both of which are focused on reducing vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. Goal H has been edited to broaden the intent of development, mitigating its own costs, and that's consistent with city practice. And we could go to the policies.
Can I ask you? Yes. I'd like the wording for all those. The last one that we talked about, I was puzzling over what the original meaning of that one was. I wonder if you can just parse that for me a little bit.
The mitigation of infrastructure cost?
Yeah, so that was the original one. Does that have to do with like providing streets and stuff like that? And then you took it out, and then what's, what is, what is the cost of development? How's that defined?
So it would be a cost for this, this, I think it's specifically talking about not in urban areas that there's infrastructure that would go out to, for instance, the Brisbane Acres. But, but really, when we're talking about mitigations, it's, it's in a broader sense that development will pay for its costs. So infill development, for instance, in central Brisbane is pretty well focused on. On within the limits of the site, of course, they have to pay for costs to connect to infrastructure that might exist in the public right of way. As you get into larger projects that might involve, that aren't categorically exempt under SEQA, you get into more mitigation measures and larger infrastructure costs. And so this edit is really just kind of already, it's, it's casting a broader net, which already the city does, so it's consistent with city practice and policy.
It's just kind of just making sure that new housing development, you tend to encourage it in places that already have infrastructure, is that?
Well, we're, we're encouraging it. I would say it's encouraged elsewhere, too. If this is on for housing, yes, we, we'd encourage it, but, but the development essentially has to pay for its, for the, its own cost to.
Yes, through, through the chair, I think what you'll find is that, as Ken mentioned, the kind of infrastructure improvements in an urbanized area that already has infrastructure, roads are much reduced compared to a greenfield where you might have to extend water, sewer utilities and build roads. So I think there, you know, I think just the nature of the requirement promotes infill development from a market standpoint, in the sense that it's, it's just cheaper to do infill because the infrastructure costs are much less compared to greenfield development. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that is just the reality that these requirements do, do tend to favor economically infill development.
Yeah, no, I understand. It makes sense, and I don't want to get ahead of the agenda. You can just cut me off whenever you want to, because I have these questions, but I, I did notice a little bit later on that there's something under RENA that says that at least 50% of your new housing has to be proposed in areas that are not already built up. Is that right?
That's correct.
And, but an area that doesn't already have housing in it, it by its very nature, you would have to build all the infrastructure, right? Roads, sewage, all that stuff. So I'm just wondering how this fits.
Yeah, so I, I think there's, there's I think what the state's intent in that requirement, and that does come from the state, is is essentially to not compete with existing uses. So if you have, for instance, uses that are already built up with, with a development, whether it's an office building or a warehouse, there's a essentially, there's a already a revenue stream that a new development would have to compete with to come in and redevelop it, redevelop it to housing. And so it's, it's so I, I don't know that this goal answers that exactly. It's, it's really kind of either way, as, as we just mentioned, a housing development is going to mitigate their costs, and yes, a big vacant site is going to have higher costs. So it's, it is, there is a bit of disconnect in a way, but, but I think the intent on the state's part is, is is to make housing happen, and it's, they see it as more likely to happen on vacant sites where no, no revenue is coming in yet, but.
Yeah, I understand. It makes sense what you're saying, and it's, it sounds like.
Yeah, just to clarify, vacant sites, you know, in an urbanized area, they're infill, but they, they would count as being sort of, they're still vacant, right? You have vacant sites in an infill environment, too. So the state, as I understand it, Ken, you can correct if I'm wrong, relates to uses or areas that are already developed with a different use. Now, it doesn't really speak to not getting credit for, for vacant infill. It's still considered vacant property.
Right, okay, thank you.
And, and yeah, so feel free to interrupt in the middle of this. This is a workshop, so I should have mentioned that upfront, and I'm glad you did, and so you can continue to do that as we work through. We have three pages now coming up on policies, and I'll, I'll just briefly go over those. And you can, if there's any that, that pique your interest, by all means, you can, you can stop me and we can discuss those. So as with the first goal, the corresponding policy has been updated to address AFFH and another policy added to protect residents from displacement. The other changes here are to bring the policies up to date with current practice and terminology. Jumping down to Policy B9 at, at the bottom there, funding sources are being evaluated under the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan. And so we anticipate coming back to the commission with a new policy, is that, or multiple policies as that effort is further along. And we can go to the next slide. Notable items on this slide are that the old policy D2 would be removed since that was applicable essentially to the Parkside Plan, which has been completed now. A new policy would be added to use objective design standards for new development. This would provide for more certainty to prospective developers, and we've talked about that in past sessions. And those objective design standards are in the adoption process this year. And next slide, please.
On this. Ask please about the rezoning one. That's another one that kind of caught my interest, though, but use zoning as appropriate. I kind of got this, this sense from the last meeting that that was not a direction that you, that in general you wanted to go in, that there was a preference for, instead of, I, I want to make sure I understand it, that, that there's a preference for not rezoning, say, a warehouse space. Maybe because there's a competing revenue stream. It seemed, it almost sounded like a bit of a non-starter to me. And that there, and that therefore there is this preference for going to an area that doesn't already have a competing use, like the Baylands. Is that how I should understand that? And I'm not quite sure, no zoning of residential areas, no rezoning of residential areas adjacent to commercial uses. What, why would you have to rezone? Because they're already zoned residential, right?
So I, I think this was getting at essentially the, the Parkside Plan is essentially to establish with the zoning for the residential use was to establish an environment that, whether it's kind of buffers around residential, if needed, next to commercially uses that, that were suitable. So you have some kind of compatibility between those different uses.
Oh, so that they're not completely adjacent to each other? Is that the idea?
Potentially, if there was going to be conflict of those, in those uses, yes, that, that could be.
Is.
Okay, have to do with setbacks, have to do with heights potentially, if you had yeah, conflicting space, I guess, airspace and heights, different environments that, that might be conflicting. And so this was addressed through the Parkside Plan over that two-year period.
Let's see. And ask a naive question, you can just feel free to refer me to the Parkside Plan. If that's what I should do, just to get informed. Did that plan involve any rezoning? Like rezoning or something like that of commercial space to residential?
Right, so it's, it's, it's an overlay district that was established so that that has been rezoned, but the commercial uses can continue there as well.
So that was done to meet our previous RENA shortfall. So it was a program in the 2015 Housing Element that we then had to follow through on in that planning period because we did not rezone the way we were supposed to the previous Housing Element period. Right, Ken, that's what those units were.
Right, but that's completed now, and, and we're not looking at other areas that would be similar to that. So that's why this policy was proposed to go away.
Okay, and I just have one last question, then we can carry on. Is there like a technical difference between rezoning and upzoning? Is it one like mandatory and one optional or something like that?
Um.
Zoning typically you'd use in the context of, it's, you know, there's already residential development allowed in the district, and you want to allow a higher intensity of residential development. So maybe you'll upzone it from 20 dwellings per acre maximum to 30 dwellings per acre maximum. Rezoning, I think, is a broader term. That means just changing the zoning designation of a given area.
I see, and that's more draconian somehow, I guess, like to just say, alright, this is not, this is no longer commercial, but it's residential, or something like that.
Yeah, changing the designation, changing it to allow different uses by rezoning it.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Welcome. Okay. So let's see, on this slide, we've added the new policy. I mentioned that the Objective Design Standards for New Development provide more certainty to prospective developers, and those are in process this year. And then the third slide is aside from a couple of edits, to use a more active voice in the wording, Policy I3 would be removed since mitigating the root cause of social equity problems is really outside the scope of the Housing Element, although it's a laudable goal for sure, but it is outside the, the scope here. And finally, as we've discussed, development of the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan is ongoing, and staff will be looking at the policies that will link the plan to the Housing Element, and so additional policies are anticipated to be included in the draft element, along with all the implementing programs, as Julie mentioned. And so the commission will have an opportunity to review those at that time. And we can go to the next steps. And so following tonight's meeting, staff will prepare the draft updated Housing Element with the aim of having it published for a 30-day review period starting in mid-April. We would then schedule a public hearing at the Planning Commission in May in order to prove, provide the commission public hearing essentially, receive public comment, and then provide a recommendation to City Council now before their anticipated hearing in June. We'll further communicate with the commission and the public with the release of that draft element in April and the upcoming hearing, which will follow in May. And note also that, as was outlined in staff's written report to the commission, we'll be putting for the Baylands and draft element for the sites to meet the RENA. That's in addition to the pre-existing zoning as carried over from the, the current Housing Element. And use of the Baylands is consistent with the JJ, Measure JJ that we've discussed in the General Plan Amendment. So with that, I'm happy to take any more questions that the commission has, and any comments, any more comments that you might have on goals or policies, and.
Can I just add real quick, Ken, I think in addition to like the revisions that we put forth, you know, Ken was saying we want to make it more active voice, that sort of thing. I think the, the other thing we need to recognize is the state really wants us to actually really proactively do things. All of the changes to state law that have happened in the past since our last cycle are really focused on cities really being accountable and actually committing to actions. So a lot of the language cleanup is also with the, the, the point of us really committing to do things. So rather than seeking to consider things, we need to actually do things. And obviously, there's a lot of nuances there, but I just want to put that out there for you guys as we get into discussing what our goals are and policies are, that you have to keep that in mind, is what are we actually willing to commit to?
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I noticed that, and you know, I'm, I'm glad you made those changes, you know, I think it does, you know, I think make, you know, the, the policy stronger and shows our commitment, so. So yeah, great. Did any of the commissioners have any questions for staff?
Thank you for the review and edits and changes that, that were made. That was a lot of work.
So back to, okay, so JJ, so, so pretty much we're relying on JJ to meet our RENA numbers. So, so you all said that when we get to a point where, when we think that might not come to fruition, or there'll be an issue, you know, you'll, we'll look at other sites or whatnot and regroup then. So like, do we have kind of like a, like a timeframe in mind of, of when we think like, you know, that should happen, like when we should know about JJ and if we need to transition or not?
Well, certainly we'll, like, so Ken, that sort of schedule, the draft gets published in, in what, May, April rather? And then there's a series of hearings, and then it goes to the state in the fall. And then it's likely to come back to this, well, have to come back to the city for further revision and whatnot. So there'll be a whole, I think by the time that. So there'll be a whole, I think by the time that loop happens, um, after the state review. We'll all be in a much better position to understand where we, where we are, and also the state's reaction to, um. You know, the Baylands as a site as well. So, um, you know, and its acceptability, because it will have gone through a round of, of, of review. The other thing, you know, there are some scheduling uncertainties. In terms of the requirement, when, when that plan has to be adopted. So, so, um. You know, I think we want to keep our options open as long as possible, frankly, with that particular project. And if they're moving forward. I think there's, um, good policy reason to. To focus on that and not try to come up with, as we've talked about the other meeting about the difficulty of coming up with that alternative number of sites. In Western Brisbane will be a problem and probably no easier to implement over time. And would be getting the Baylands approved. So I think we just have to be flexible and adapt to what, what the situation is. As this evolves.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you think that in the long term, like at the next housing element, like there'll be another housing requirement, right? For, how long does this one last? Ten years?
So twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. But the next, the next process will start a, a couple of years before twenty thirty-one. So we'll, we'll start talking about it probably in twenty twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-nine, excuse me.
Do you think, just out of interest, do you think it's sort of inevitable that you will have to consider some of these other areas at that time? Or, or not? I'm just curious what your long-term expectation is.
Will we get a pass forever from Rena?
Exactly, like, I mean, is Brisbane ever going to be full or are going to say, look, you know, it's, there's more people coming and you're going to have to do. Thank you for the Baylands, but you know.
No, nobody's ever full, but again, Rena cycles, to say they swing wildly. Like our point of context, Ken, if I remember right, setting aside our shortfall from twenty fifteen, wasn't Arena number eighty-three?
That's correct.
So one, one cycle, it's eighty-three and the next cycle, it's fifteen hundred and some. So, so I, I guarantee you it'll be somewhere in that range. I'm willing to commit to that.
I love that. Yes, wide confidence.
Okay, should we, uh, see if there's any questions from members of the public on this or?
Yeah, at your discretion. And I see that we do have a hand raised, um, Barbara E. Bell. So I'll go ahead and allow her to talk and Barbara, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Thanks. Um, I was just curious about one thing staff said. Um, they said they chose to remove the. The thing about equity barriers. Because it was not in scope and I, I, I was just wondering if they could collaborate on that because. Um, I kind of feel like those issues are all in scope all the time for everyone. Because we kind of all need to be all hands in on this. So I'm, I'm just curious about staff's reasoning behind that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the redlined policy H one three, or sorry, HI three?
Yeah.
Right, we. We felt that this was, was really speaking more to. Root causes of, of social inequities and, and. You could look at all, all kinds of issues from, from educational background. Family background, race, the, um. Things that, that. Really need to be addressed, but, but we see that as, as. Really, we're looking at it from a housing point of view. And, and it, it speaks to the first policy or first goal as well of. Affirmatively furthering fair housing and, and that's really getting that, at those inequities. And providing housing because we recognize that, that it, it, the world is not fair to everybody. And so we, we need to do our best to, to. Provide housing for, for people who are underprivileged or, or discriminated against and, and so.
Then to get to Julia's comment too about the idea of these, these policies to be somewhat actionable. There's, you know, again, a lot of practical difficulties of moving the needle at a regional, state or federal level. At some of these root cause issues and not that they're not important and not that they shouldn't be pursued. But the implementation of the housing element, we feel is not really the, the best place or the best vehicle. To advance those broader policy issues that staff time to implement the housing element should be, should be focused on. On actionable, uh, things that we do control in terms of our, our, uh, local housing supply. And, and to further those afford to, or affirmatively further those fair housing goals that are set forth, which Ken pointed out.
Yeah, and the city council can still, I mean, if, you know, if this is still, uh, something there's policy interest in. It doesn't mean the city as a whole cannot pursue a policy if council chooses to do so. It's just again, like everyone just said, is it, is the housing element the place to do that versus the actually. You know, affirmatively furthering for housing kind of policies that directly relate to housing.
And interestingly, this was the one policy, as I recall, that did not have any programs under it. Because it's not, it's not something that we can program through the housing element to actually address. So, and in a way, I, I think if we have things like this in the housing element. It, it almost diminishes the other policies that we can implement. Because it, it, they get sort of lost in the weeds of what we can't, so.
Okay, anyone else have any comments? No? Okay, so, uh, is that it for the presentation, Steph?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I guess we'll go on to our next item, which is items initiated by staff.
Oh, all right. Is there no discussion amongst commissioners? Okay.
Well, I didn't know, I thought, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, did, did anyone else have anything to ask, to add? Commissioner Funka, Commissioner Lau?
No, I, I raised all the questions that I wanted to, and I, and I really appreciate the discussion about that, uh, the last. The last one that was omitted and I agree with the reasoning. But as it was passing by, I did say, oh, that's an interesting one, but I agree with your rationale.
Okay, sorry, I think I was, well, I thought you were asking for comments from the public and then that made me realize I did not, uh, show the slide. Um, so anyone who wasn't in the Zoom didn't have the call-in or text information. Do you want to?
Sure.
If we can jump back to the workshop and, okay. Okay, so if there was anyone watching on YouTube or on television, I've put up the text number. You can also call into the workshop or raise your hand for additional comments. Sorry about that, Chair.
No problem.
And I'll, uh, display this for the next, uh, let's say thirty seconds. Okay. Ten seconds. Okay. And I don't have any callers, no more raised hands.
Well, thank you. Um, and before we wrap up, I'm going to ask Commissioner Lau, uh, again, if he had anything to, to add, no?
Nothing else, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks, Steph. Interesting to see our, our next meeting on this and kind of wrap this up. Um, okay, so we have anything items initiated by staff?
Um, just a couple of things. Again, if you didn't have the opportunity to, to watch the council meeting. That was last week, Julia, with the housing. The third, um, yeah, there was a workshop regarding the, the affordable housing strategy that Ken had briefly touched on. And it was an interesting discussion. If you have the opportunity to sort of view that, you might get a sense of some of the councils. The housing related issues, it's probably a good, a good view for you if you have the opportunity. So I recommend you consider that.
I, I'm, I'm, I'll confess, I don't quite know what the YouTube channel is. Is it very easy to find? Do you mind sending out a link to that meeting that we can just click on and watch?
I think we can find a way to do that. Yes.
That would be great. Thank you. I'll, I'll definitely watch it.
Um, and then just upcoming, just, um, just for your information, next Tuesday evening at seven PM, there's going to be a. Environmental impact report scoping meeting for the forthcoming Sierra Point Towers project. Again, commissioners, you're not obligated to attend. You certainly can view it if you're interested. But you'll be seeing the end result of that in, in the environmental impact report once it's published. Which will be something that'll be subject to your review along with the project. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's happening next Tuesday. And that's all I have.
Hey, thank you. Anything, items initiated by the commission?
Not for me, thank you.
Okay, okay, well then, um, we will adjourn the meeting. And, uh, for our next one, uh, March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you, everyone.